Okay. Calling the September 13th Board of Education meeting to order. And acknowledging AB 361 about the pandemic guidelines, we are continuing in a hybrid fashion. Are there any comments from the public on closed session items? And there's no one. So we are going to adjourn to closed session.
Damn, no one wants to sit next to me.
Okay. Reconvening at 6:03. Welcome everyone, hello it's people. I love the bunny ears and the friend. All right, um, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance next. Took a minute, but we all ended at the same time. All right. I need to do a countdown next time. All right, so next up is the public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing. It's contract reopeners with California School Employees Association and Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts for Successor Agreement. Is there anyone in person or online that would like to make a comment about? About this item? While we're waiting to see if anyone's in the chat, Matthew or Chris, do you have anything or Jason?
This is, this is really, can you hear me? This is a public, it's a public hearing, so we've.
We can't quite hear you.
We've posted information publicly that we're having a public hearing. If anyone wants to chime in and share feedback about the negotiation process, this is the time to do it.
Okay, thank you. Trying to be mindful of the microphones for Dave, so.
And it's really for the successor.
Okay.
Talking about this year's, this year and beyond.
Okay, is there anyone in person that has a comment about this? No, looks like we don't have, is the chat open? Yeah, okay. Doesn't look like there's anyone online, so we're going to close the public hearing. And move on to special recognitions, reports and presentations. All right, looks like we have student reports for Pen Grove, Mary Collins at Cherry Valley, Kennelworth and Petaluma Junior. So, do you already have the order determined? Okay. Okay.
All right, there we are. All right, so hello everybody, I'm Carly Harp, I am the principal at Pen Grove Elementary. And my lovely Panthers are here, I'll introduce them in a moment. So I wanted to talk today about PBIS, which we are implementing as a district this year and is something that is near and dear to my heart. So PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. It's a mouthful, most students just know it as PBIS. This is a research-based framework used by everyone on campus. So our yard duties have been trained, our custodians are getting the information, we have parents getting the same information. Students are getting trained, we are all being trained in the same language and the same expectations. We have the common language and common expectations. We are creating a positive school culture by teaching the desired behaviors. So we know what to do when a student doesn't know how to read. We teach them. When they don't know how to add, we teach them. They don't know how to swim, we teach them. But what about when a student doesn't know how to behave? That question is a little bit harder to answer, but it still needs to be the same thing. We teach them. Oftentimes in schools, what we see is, don't do this, don't do that, no running. We're trying to flip that on its head and turn it into the positive, because if you say no running, guess what? Now you've got 30 kids skipping down the hallway, right? Because they still need that movement. But if I say, make sure that you're walking, because that's a safe expectation at Pen Grove. Students right away understand what that looks like, why I need them to do that, and then I'm asking them to do something that we have already communicated, and it's being communicated in a respectful way. So we are creating a school-wide and classroom and individual system of support to improve the learning environment of our students, including learning how to navigate relationships. So this goes right back to our district goals of ensuring that students have equitable access to their education by offering all students the same information, the same expectations, and then the same rewards, and we call them restorative actions instead of consequences. So Addie is not here tonight, my TK friend, but we have Noah Newman here tonight, a first grader. Joe Tracy is one of our second graders, and then we have two third grade students, Lucy Chikatelli and Grace Hubacher. And thank you to their families for taking this time, I know that that is tough, because they've all been at school all day. So I appreciate it. All right, so these guys are going to teach you how to do something. We do this every day at school, it is sign language, we talk about it every single day, so I want you guys, you ready? Okay, so our three expectations are Pen Grove, at Pen Grove are to be safe. Be respectful. And be responsible. All right, so it's your turn. You get to do this. So you are going to cross your arms in front. And we're going to be safe. You're going to cross your fingers, put one at your chin and one off to the left a little bit. Be respectful. And then you're going to take two fingers and tap a shoulder, be responsible. And we all do this every single day to start the day. And it's really great to have this sign language, because we can be across the playground, and I can see an issue and just show the sign. I can see a kid dangling from the funky bars and do the thimble, and they know what I'm talking about. So I don't have to run my way over there to let them know that that's the expectation. Plus, it's a positive interaction, right? Because I'm not sitting there pointing to the ground and telling them, get your feet on the ground, although that's still positively framed, but they know what's happening. All right, each location on school has these expectations, to be safe, be respectful, be responsible. And as a staff, we have to find what that looks like in every single location. So we have this for before school, eating areas, bathrooms, classroom, general areas, office. One of our expectations to be respectful in the office is to say hello and state your purpose as to why you're there. So we're teaching this to the students, because oftentimes, I mean, adults are scary, right? When you're a little ghetto, you walk into the office, and that's kind of a big scary place. But if we say, the expectation is for you to state your name and purpose, it almost gives them like a tagline to go with, right? So they feel confident walking in. So we teach these intentionally at the beginning of every year and on a rotating schedule. So once a week, I re-address one area at our assembly, and we talk about that at our assembly, how to be safe, respectful and responsible in that particular area. All right, this is our passport event, I'm going to have some kiddos talk about this. So who wants to tell everybody about the passport event? You want to? All right, now come on over here. Take it out. Right now, can you, what can you tell us about the passport event?
Um, the pass.
Yeah, you're good.
Um, the passport event is when we visit all the places at Pen Grove.
And what do you do there?
We, um, our teachers tell us facts about them. Like, facts about the place.
How to be what?
Be safe, respectful and responsible.
All right, and then? And what else, not quite, hold on. What else happened at passport time? What did you guys do? Grace, do you remember?
Um, after we got a stamp on each expectation, we get little wristbands.
So the classes then turned it in. I made an announcement during morning announcements or assembly, and then made a big deal, acted like a big goofball when I came into the classroom, and they all got wristbands. So Joe.
Pen Grove. Be safe, respectful and responsible.
All right, and I'm going to have Lucy tell you about this next slide, our PAW Awards.
The PAW Awards are what we earn for being either safe, respectful or responsible.
And who can give them to you?
Um, a yard duty or a teacher.
And what, what do you do with them once you get a PAW Award?
You would write your name and your room, room number, and then you would slice off the bottom and put it in a cup that your teacher has.
And what happens from that cup?
Then you can get pulled, and if you get your ticket pulled, then you can get a prize.
All right, so once a week, teachers. Teachers select their PAW Award winner. They get their name announced at our weekly assembly, their picture is taken and put in our Pen Grove press, and it is also on a repeating slideshow that's on in our main hallway of the building at all times. And then, oh, this is the exciting part, who wants to talk about this? All of you? Yeah. All right, how about each of you talk about one thing about the PAW Award winners? You want to start?
When you get a PAW Award, some of the prizes are toys or like little certificates that say, bring two friends to lunch with Mrs. Harp, or like, go join a kindergarten class for export. And you can also get a homework pass, and that's what I got, and I skipped a page of homework.
Wow.
You can also get something that says you can do in morning announcements with Ms. Harp.
All right, so students actually gathered a bunch of ideas, teachers gathered ideas from their students, and we made a list of ideas that the students wanted as prizes, things that they were willing to work for as a reward. And a lot of these are a lot of fun. I've had some very busy lunches with TK friends in my office. It's, it's a lot of fun. And so, we also noticed that one of the things that we had been struggling with was downtime during recesses. We have nearly 500 students, and they're not all out there at the same time, but when you've got 500, 250 students at a time on a play structure or playground, there can be downtime. So we noticed that there was downtime. We implemented a new rule that we could only have equal numbers in a line. So I don't want to have one wall ball court with one student standing in line and one with 19 standing in a line. So we're trying to keep that balanced, it's keeping a lot more activity and movement during recess. We also noticed that we were having some increase in behaviors during competitive sports. So we pulled back on competitive sports, focused on skill building, focused on relationship building during sports, and established sports expectations. So which, who was going to talk about the sports expectations? That was you, right Noah? All right. Noah's going to tell you about the sports expectations.
Sports expectations are. Only like a free hand tap. And. I think one more would be good. And. You need to go around the game instead of on it.
All right, so we created one of our matrix areas is sports and how to be safe, respectful and responsible in sporting activities. So in addition, staff are rewarded, PBIS is whole school. So when staff turn in their unused tickets, we have this gigantic box that they, they really took my challenge to heart. So they have already filled this box, we are having a taco party tomorrow, if anybody would like to join us. We're having a taco bar at 1 o'clock tomorrow. So we're rewarding staff for their efforts as well. We challenge staff to give up 10 PAW Awards a day, and they are not only doing that, but a lot are doing more. So we can also celebrate our own, so I am also instituting that we can honor a staff member. I honor one each day that we have our assembly in our recognition, and staff can honor each other as well. All right, and that's everything. Good job.
Excellent.
Good job.
Wow. Great.
That was wonderful, thank you.
Hi, thank you all so much, this is Slides Eiker, Mary Collins School. And I really want to thank our student presenters who prepared this from beginning to end, and their teachers and parents who are all here to support them, thank you.
We are so, we are so excited to be back at Mary Collins at Cherry Valley.
We're, we're very happy that we finally get to have a TK class at our school. The teacher, Ms. O'Brien, bring. You're doing great. Brings many things to the school, such as experience, wisdom and joy. Having the younger students to include is amazing. They even have a chicken in their closet.
Buddies. Buddies is an inspiring program where all 4th through 8th graders get a TK through 3rd grade student. Sometimes two older kids have one buddy, or one older kid has two buddies. But either way, we have a great time, and sometimes the two people even can become friends. Buddies meet weekly and complete fun challenges and projects. This program is meant to help younger children see how older children learn and grow, learn and grow from the experience.
Beach day. We do beach day because it is, because it is fun for everyone. It also gives different grades a chance to interact with each other. This year, we had a wonder, we had wonderful weather and a lot of family and MCCV graduates who joined us on the beach. All in all, beach day is a great way to spend a day away from school.
The first dis. The first assembly. We are very excited to bring back the leadership classes, student-driven assemblies. Later this week, we have an alumni from our school, Kobe Walder, as a speaker.
Zune Zune Assembly. The Zune Zune Assembly was a presentation that was performed by a water recycler. The instructor made very cool music with a catchy tone. Everybody got up and danced to the music. So the Zune Zune Assembly was a very nice way for the whole school to learn about how we can reduce plastic and save water.
Food for Thought. Food for Thought food drives. Food for Thought is an organization that provides healthy food and groceries to Sonoma County residents with serious or long-term medical conditions. In 2021 to 2022 school year, we raised $26,233 in cash and food. We are in front of Petaluma Market on the third Saturday of each month. Please come support our students in their efforts. Also, the food drive will be this Saturday. Okay, excellent.
The multilingual community. Parents, students. Parents, the multilingual community. Parents, students and staff are all interested in learning new languages and diversifying our language exposure. We have new games to play in Spanish, a Friday music playlist and plans for many, many more things. Recently, guests from Kobe Japan led art and language centers in our 4th and 5th grade classrooms.
Green Team. Green Team is a totally student-initiated and driven. A small group of 4th, 5th and 6th grade students give up their lunch recess to pick up garbage and sort waste into the correct compost recycle or landfill bins. They are hoping to educate and inform the MCCV community so that everyone sorts their waste into the correct bin. It started with two inspiring 5th graders and has turned into this great project.
Celebrate Reading Day. Last Wednesday, we enjoyed our first Celebrate Reading Day in a long time. Our school has a special tradition where our entire group gathers to the quad and reads books as an entire community. It's a day where we celebrate reading, and we have a special guest reader before we go out and have fun reading together. Reading is a big priority of our, in our school district.
The Walkathon. The Walkathon is a tradition that our school has been doing for many years, a way to raise money for every single cause that goes towards our school.
Class Plays. We will be having in-person plays again this year. Our school plays are an opportunity for students to be up on stage and have a performance to share with the school. Our school plays are put together as a class, and everybody in the class has some sort of part. Class performances are also another chance for students in the class to bond with one another. Class plays are not only about the performing aspect of it, but also about learning how to be a good audience member. Plays have gone amazing in the past, and the past two years, we couldn't do them because of COVID, but we are excited to introduce them again this year.
Frida Kahlo List Study and Al Casa Azul Illustration. MCCV recently did a study about the legendary artist Frida Kahlo. Each student did a unique self-portrait in the style of Frida Kahlo's art. This year, we are going to take our knowledge from Frida's artwork and make our own Casa Azul museum. We are really excited to see where this project will take us, please join us on November 2nd.
In the works. We have a lot of up-and-coming things, like for example, Sports Day, the school dances, PTA picnics, make your space, walk and roll the school days in the bug fair.
Thank you for listening, and I hope you can come by our school soon. This slideshow was presented by Margot Harding.
And Jono Sartick.
Great, thank you. Great.
We're next, going to hear from Noah, so give us a quick second, we're going to advance some of them.
Okay.
They're coming to us soon.
Aggress.
Just while we're ready for our audience, we have two more presentations, Kennelworth and Peddleman Junior, and then we are going to take a little break, so.
All right, Stella and Sienna, can you guys hear us? You can hear me yourselves, and we have your slides up? Give us one second, we're going to make sure we can hear yourselves. That sounds great. Yay, there you are. Hi Stella, hi Sienna.
Hi.
Making sure we can see you guys and your slides at the same time. All right, you guys, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sienna Vatal.
And I'm Stella Knight.
We're part of the 8th grade leadership class. Today, we will be representing Kennelworth Junior High School. We are so delighted to be starting a new school year. The first couple of weeks have been very thrilling with fun events and classes starting.
Orientation is a day full of bright smiles and excitement, not only for the 7th graders, but also for the families being welcomed into the cult community. Orientation is an important day, especially for our 7th graders, as they are getting to, they are getting all of their materials for the beginning of the school year. And orientation can help the 7th graders prepare for a new educational chapter in their life.
In these photos, we can see all the new 7th graders. The new students arriving at the school have a new journey ahead of them at Kennelworth Junior High. Our cults are just starting, and we get to see them bond and have more independence this 2022 to 2023 school year.
Orientation overall was a huge success with an enormous amount of new and old students marching their way into the new school year. Whether it's buying new PE clothes or getting your schedule, it's an exciting day.
We cults are starting the 2022 to 23 school year strong with friends and classmates. These first few weeks have been exciting, where we reconnect with old friends as well as meet new people. We hope to see our fellow cults improve academically and socially.
Welcome to Kennelworth Cults, this is our first day back, and everyone is so excited to make new friends and see friends from last year. The first day of school is always filled with a bit of nervousness and lots of excitement.
We are now just getting ready for the new school year and preparing incoming students for this year, introducing KJHS and teaching students the new rules that apply on campus. We are so ready for this new fun school year.
We start learning fast as we can learn more. There are many subjects we can learn, math being a very important one. All of these pictures show students engaged in Mr. Ryder's 8th grade math class.
The Kennelworth teachers incorporate a lot of interactive learning. Teachers here believe that this type of learning sharpens the mind. On the left, history is learning about continents and oceans. On the right, yearbook is getting to know each other, and at the bottom, robotics is experimenting.
As you can see from this slide, students are having lots of fun in Ms. Barrell's 8th grade English class. They're working on Loom and testing out, making videos for fun upcoming projects. This is the school atmosphere we are fortunate to have here at Kennelworth.
Our school's leadership class organizes Fun Fridays for our students. There are lots of different games from musical chairs to tug of war. We usually have these every two weeks, and we also play music. Our leadership class is very honored to be able to do these Fun Fridays for our amazing 7th and 8th grade students.
Fun Fridays encourage students to have fun with one another. The activity is open to anyone who wants to participate, and each receives a prize at the end. It's a great school event that accepts anyone and everyone. Students are always welcome to join whenever they'd like.
On September 1st, we had our Back to School Night. It was a great success. Parents came and heard about what their students would be learning this year. Everyone enjoyed their time talking with other parents, talking with the teachers and learning about their students' classes.
Back to School Night was busy, and the leadership class was there to help parents navigate on the campus. The bottom photo shows a few of our classmates in leadership, and the top two photos are parents eagerly waiting to see what their child is doing this year.
KJHS 7th graders said aloha to our icebreaker dance. There was so much dancing, smiles and lots of fun. The leadership class worked hard at this dance, and that hard work paid off.
Our icebreaker dance was a huge success. Most of the students dressed up in their Hawaiian clothes to show school spirit. All of the students enjoyed the different activities and went home tired.
The games that were at the icebreaker dance were great, and people really enjoyed it. Students were eager to play the game shown in the picture as well as others. Overall, the dance was a major success among the entire school.
Kennelworth Junior High School has amazing students who participate in many of our school activities, such as the dances and Fun Fridays. One of the things we are really excited about this school year is our new principal and vice principal, Mr. Maury and Ms. Denon. principal, Mr. Maury and Ms. Denon. We hope KJHS can be their home away from home. Our school is off to a great start this school year. Go Colts.
Thank you both so much, you did an awesome job. Thank you. All right, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you all for having us. I'm Erin Diday, the principal at Pedaluma Junior High School, and we also have.
I'm Ray McClintock, the assistant principal.
So presenting our site report tonight are our two August students of the month. We have Stella Napoli and William Hale. Our eighth grade students of the month for August are always really unique because they're voted on by both the seventh grade teachers who had them last year and the eighth grade teachers. So I'm gonna have Ray start by introducing Stella.
I get the pleasure of introducing who I call Madam President, Stella Napoli, who is our ASP president. She was selected by her teachers for her initiative, the kindness she shows to everyone on campus, her infectious enthusiasm and her strong academics. Teachers also note that her care for the campus and the student body stands out amongst her peers and I get the privilege of watching Stella deliver our morning announcements every morning from my office.
And I'll be introducing Will. So Will was selected by his teachers for a variety of different attributes for being inquisitive, kind, enthusiastic, organized and hardworking. Teachers also highlight that he maintains his own sense of self. He communicates well with both peers and adults. He's not afraid to talk to adults. He's a leader in group work and he gets along really well with his peers. So we want to congratulate them as our students of the month.
Hello, my name is Stella Napoli. I am ASP president and um, I'm sharing my highlight of the year. Um, my highlight of the year so far has been doing morning announcements every day with my friends. I enjoy saying the pledge of allegiance and making announcements as a group. And I think it is really affecting our school in a good way.
Hi. I am William Hale and my, my favorite part of Pedaluma Junior High is the freedom of choosing what I'd like to learn and the opportunity to attend more challenging classes. I do the the, I do best in the classes I enjoy the most. So choosing most of the classes I want to be in will help me succeed in the classes I want, I wanted to do. We, we have a slide to.
And let's go outside.
Please walk. Remember your positive behavior intervention skill. All right, we are reconvening. Thank you for sticking with us through that and we're gonna play the rest of your video. All right, thank you. Those most exciting board reports.
Yeah, really.
I won't take over anything. Okay. I know we just took a break, but we'll take like a one minute break just so everyone can go ahead and make your way out if you have homework or any other dinner to do. Bye. Yeah. The student of the month, yeah, she left during the.
One of our school board members from last year. Her brother was the junior high. He.
From last year.
But Hale.
He sat right there.
I might not have said student. I was thinking it. I better send Bill. He says I can't.
All right.
You get a whole bunch of people. Did she feel it or was it just the announcement?
Sounds like Senator.
Yeah.
I'm gonna show my students this board meeting. All right. Okay, Chris Thomas.
Follow that up.
Yeah.
It, it's hard enough following the students. Literally, I'm looking at my phone going, is this a joke? Anywho, that was exciting. Okay. So tonight we're presenting an audited actuals and I've given out a couple binders so that people can follow along. Each of you should have a binder, again, extra up here if someone else wants one. Um, so unaudited actuals is kind of a misnomer because it makes it sound like the numbers might, might not be correct, but basically it's the state's version of we closed the books. We're presenting our financial position as of June 30th, 2022. And then later, all of those, all of that information is audited by our independent financial auditors and they'll come out with a financial audit report. So in the narrative, I've kind of given you what's in here. There's a lot of reports in here. Fortunately, we'll, we will not be going page by page, although I'm happy to if you'd like me to. Nope, no takers, okay. So just as a reminder, we are five different organizations, actually six if you count South County, so we're Pedaluma Joint Union High School District, Pedaluma City Elementary District. We are Pen Grove Elementary, we are Mary Collins, two of which you saw tonight. Charter, Charter School, we're PAX, Pedaluma Accelerated Charter School and we're South County Consortium. All of that is included in our financials. So when we present, we present as a combined general fund. So I've listed out all of our ending fund balances for all of the funds on page two of the narrative. I kind of go through some of the major variances between our final budget revision and how we closed, but I'm gonna kind of jump to the spreadsheets because it's a little bit easier to follow along when you see the actual variances in dollars and cents. But you can refer back to the narrative if you want it more in words. So anyway, I'm looking at the first page of the spreadsheet, the first three pages are unrestricted general fund and that's where I'm gonna spend the majority of our time. So column A was our adopted budget for this year, just for comparison purposes. And that's what's in the state reports, which is the adopted budget for this year and then it shows how we closed last year's books. Column B, it was the final budget revision we brought to you back in June. And column C is how we closed the books and of course, column D becomes our variances. So what's really important is you see the very first number, seven, one, two, six as compared to seven, one. I guess I should put my glasses on. Seven, one, five, eight. So we had a variance of thirty-two eighty-eight. Why is that? So we talked a little bit about when we talked about the forty-five day budget revision that we reported that the final state budget included this whole idea of we have now three options when we're looking at our final revenues. Do we use current year ADA for twenty-one, twenty-two? Do we use prior year ADA? Which wasn't really relevant for twenty-one, twenty-two because of the pandemic? Or do we use this new idea that we take the attendance factor from two thousand nineteen, twenty, pre-pandemic? And, and apply that to our seabeds for twenty-one, twenty-two. That was a new thing that was in the enacted state budget. So we, for our two organizations, Pedaluma Joint Union and Pedaluma City Elementary, were using the two thousand nineteen, twenty, eighty-eight. There was no change in ADA for that particular, for those calculations. However, our three charters are all growing. So in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, they all had higher levels of enrollment than they did in two thousand nineteen, twenty. However, they had lower attendance because the pandemic, kids weren't coming to school. So when we were projecting how we were gonna do their LCFF calculations back in, in April, May, when we knew what P two was for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, we did our calculations based on that. Then the state came in and did the final budget and they gave us this opportunity or this option, if you will, to apply the attendance premium or factor from nineteen, twenty to the seabeds enrollment for those three charters for twenty-one, twenty-two. And that increased our ADA by thirty-two eighty-eight and that gives you an idea of just how much our ADA dropped from a normal attendance rate in the pandemic year of twenty-one, twenty-two versus our, a more traditional or typical year, which is two thousand nineteen, twenty. Does that make sense? So this is kind of a key piece because it really did help benefit our three charters. That's what's driving that overall two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase. And so that was something we could not have projected because at the time, we had no idea the state was gonna come out with this third option that we could use to apply to our LCFF calculations for those three charters. So anyway, it's also going to impact the three-year average when we redo this year's LCFF calculations that will play into the three-year average we use when we're looking at our overall organizations if, if by chance our charters are continuing to grow. Does that make sense? So in other words, if our enrollment drops a bit in twenty-two, twenty-three, then we would look at the three-year average, two thousand nineteen, twenty would be in for twenty, twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and then two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. So we do that for each of our organizations. We do that for both districts and we do LCFF calculations for each of the three charters. So we do five calculations and what you're seeing here is the combination of all five of those calculations. Okay? So this is a much more significant variance than I would have typically expected to see in our LCFF calculations, but it is, it is, we're not gonna complain. So just a couple of other key variances, lottery revenue also came in higher. You'll see this on the restricted and the unrestricted, those fourth quarter estimates that we received came in far higher than what we had seen in the first three quarters of the year. So we did estimates. We don't know what those final revenues will be, but we, we used what the state was recommending at the time. All other state revenue, we did not receive any. Why? This is the assessment revenue. We, we always get revenue about two years later. So in eighteen, nineteen, we did testing, right? But in nineteen, twenty, March of twenty, the pandemic hit, no testing, therefore no revenue. Because nineteen, twenty is, we get nineteen, twenties revenue in twenty-one, twenty-two, believe it or not, for the state testing. That's helpful. So that's why there's no state revenue for that. Um, interest earnings were, came in lower. You know, we're, we're hearing interest rates, but remember we're in, we're, we're obligated to invest our earnings in the county treasurer's office. They're typically much longer investments and so they're not, they're not impacted by the fluctuations in interest rates like shorter investments are. And they're also extremely conservative in their investment strategies because, you know, they're, they're investing taxpayer dollars. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to look at our first quarter of interest and be bumping up some of our interest earnings for this year, but as we closed, it actually came in less. Um, a couple of other variances, you see the other local revenues, that's all local donations. So schools did a lot of collections of local donations in May and June. We got those in in June, it's past the budget cutoff, so we accounted for them. That also is partly why you'll see down below when, when we close with more money is because we actually have a lot more carryover when we're looking at those local site donations. And then our contribution to special education also came in lower in part because our revenues came in a bit higher under AB six oh two and also in part because our contracts like non public school contracts, et cetera, came in less. So overall, our revenues are up almost a million dollars and that's a pretty dramatic shift, twenty-five percent of which is related to the LCFF change. I'm happy to stop and answer questions if you guys have any, please let me know. Going on to the next page, you're gonna see salary and benefits and other costs. So the first one you'll see our, our certificate salaries came in higher than we budgeted and that is in large part due to sub-costs. So again, we are looking at a pandemic where we have a lot of vacancies or people who are calling in sick for obvious reasons. Um, and so our substitute costs came in higher than what we originally projecting. You can see increases in management, that's because there was a settlement late in the year and so those settlement, when we did the retros on July tenth that hit back in the fiscal year, those came in. Um, you can see the classified salaries, most of that, you can see vacancies both in instructional assistance and these are not the special ed instructional assistance. These are the kindergarten instructional assistance or the supplementally funded like the EL, the BIA instructional assistance that we had vacant. These are the kindergarten instructional assistance or the supplementally funded, like the EL, the BIA instructional assistance that we had vacancies in. When you look at the twenty-nine-hundred, I went back and actually kind of looked at what, what was driving that. And a lot of it was in the student advisors and guidance specialists. We had quite a few guidance specialists that we were unable to fill, mostly supported by that supplemental funding. And then you can see the STIRS and all of the related benefits that are impacted based on the salaries up above. So you would expect STIRS to come in higher because of the certificate salaries came in higher. And the rest came in lower because the classified salaries came in lower. The biggest variance here is going to be in books and materials and supplies. And again, a lot of this relates to local donation budgets. And so if you look at the next page, which is page three, and you look at the local site donation, we're carrying over four hundred and twenty-five thousand in local site, mostly local site donations that as soon as we close, we're immediately working on posting all of those grants and donations budgets directly to the school site budget so they have access to those funds. And a lot of that, when we get a local donation in, the first place we put it is forty-three hundred. And then the school sites might move it from there into transportation for field trips or field trip costs, but it usually starts out in more than three hundred. Going down, you can see other key variances. Utilities came in a little bit higher. The first student contract, when we actually received the final invoices came in a little bit less. We had less, fewer therapy appointments that we were transporting students for. You can see. See. Field trips again came in lower. We would expect that because they collected, but they might not have spent all that funds for field trips. And you can see. Legal costs came in higher. A lot of that related to the charter petition that was received. And so there was a lot of work done for that charter petition. Going on to the next page, telephone came in less. And capital improvement, a capital equipment replacement came in less. And that's typically because we estimate what copier costs we're going to be bringing forward to replace copiers, et cetera. And you can see the indirect variances. So the overall expenditures came in about four hundred thousand less. So out of sixty million dollars, we closed with about four hundred less than what we had projected. But overall, then combined between the additional revenues and the lower expenditures, then you have a variance of about one point three million or just under one point four million. Going on to the next page, which is our restricted budget. You're going to see some big swings here, in particular, the revenues. And that's because, remember, we've received a lot of federal and state revenues that are intended to be spent over a period of number of years. So we budget a hundred percent of that. And then we recognize the revenue as we spend it. So for example, the COVID funds, we know that COVID funds were intended to have, to be spent through two thousand twenty-three or two thousand twenty-four, depending on the bucket that we received. We, we, we budget for a hundred percent of that revenue and then when we spend it, we actually recognize whatever level of revenue we spent. The rest we defer or we post as carryover. So that's why you're seeing this huge shift in the federal programs. In large part, that is the dollars. Again, we got in about thirteen million dollars this past year. We've spent a significant portion and some of that money that we're, we're going to immediately budget next year. And that, that's what's going to help to continue supporting all of those important positions that the COVID dollars are, are supporting right now. So we're waiting for those carryover dollars, which will help offset those costs. Other state revenue, this one is a little bit different. There's this whole thing of STIRS and LOO. So that changed by about two point four, but about one point two million of that is simply a paper adjustment that we do. If you turn to the next page and you look at the thirty-one hundred STIRS. When we did the final calculations for the STIRS and LOO, you can see that came in about one point two million less. The offset to that is state revenue. So those proportionately change. We made the assumption and we run all the salaries through a calculator and then we record both the revenues and the expense based on what that calculator tells us. So it's really an accounting that we're required to do based on the governmental accounting standards boards requirement that we, we post that transaction. But it's really just a paper report, reporting transaction. Parcel tax revenues also came in a little bit less. Again, we keep hoping to see increases on our parcel tax. We just have not seen those yet. Other local revenues came in about two point four million less. That's nothing to get excited about because again, we have that big bus grant and we had not received all of the electric buses yet. So we could not account for either the bussies or the revenue that we're going to get reimbursed for those buses. So they're building the buses. We have a million dollars in infrastructure related to the buses. But until the buses are all received and paid for and infrastructure is done, we cannot account for the revenue. And the majority of that variance is specifically related to school buses and the infrastructure for the charging stations. Going on to the next page, again, you're going to see a lot of negatives here. The most significant is in the forty-three hundred. A lot of that is COVID funds that we just talked about. And educator effectiveness. We also have received a huge amount of educator effectiveness that we did not spend this year. We budgeted it, we booked it, we didn't spend it. And so that, those funds are intended to be spent over five years. So each year, we're going to budget a portion of it and then we will rebook it year after year. So that's going to be a kind of the nature of getting these multi-year grants where they're giving us this amount of money, but then we have X number of years to spend it. So you're going to see a lot of that, but now in the future, as we look at our restricted programs. And then if you look at page three, you'll see the capital improvements and you'll see sixty-five hundred equipment replacement, that one point six, those are those school buses. And see the nine hundred thousand under land improvements, that is the infrastructure for the charging stations. So those two items are specifically related to that. The other building improvements is that McDowell preschool building, which we are now just starting construction on. We have a construction meeting tomorrow. So we're super excited about getting that building on the corner of Maria and McDowell. And that's in part funded by this preschool grant. So that money is going to get rolled over budgeted this year and it will actually be spent this year because we're starting construction. So we're super excited about that. And that is it on the general fund in a nutshell. I just want to walk you through some of the other information that's in the supplemental tab. So if you turn to the supplemental tab. The first couple of pages, I'm just going to walk you through and we're not going to go over every number. We'll be glad to know. But the first couple of pages are ADA. So this is, you know, the ADA for our, our two districts is on the first page. And you can see that P two, the annual, and then the funded, that funded ADA is that two thousand nineteen, twenty, eighty-eight. So you can see how it's different from the actual ADA that we reported. And this is of important note because you can see our ADA for P two, twenty-one, twenty-two. Fifty-six, eighty-four versus what we're funded on, sixty-one, eighty-seven. That is a big variance in ADA. But remember, we're also under the three-year average now. So it doesn't mean we're necessarily going to drop. Our enrollment is not tracking up much for this year over last year. But we're going to have both the option of applying the attendance premium to last year's enrollment and then using that as part of our three-year ADA calculation. So when we look at two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, we will be doing an in-depth analysis of how do we maximize those calculations to get the most amount of money? But if our enrollment doesn't recover, that three-year average by nature will continue to go down. So it's kind of something we need to track on. We're fine for now, probably next year, but then if our enrollment doesn't start picking up, that's a concern. If you go to the next page, you'll see the opposite. You'll see P two ADA at nine thirty-seven, funded ADA at nine seventy. That's where that funded ADA, we're using the new nineteen, twenty attendance factor, applying it to this year's seabed. And we're getting a greater ADA. So our funded ADA is actually greater than what our, our P two ADA showed. Okay, I just wanted to kind of show how that, how you find that in this, in this many numbers of pages of numbers.
But that's specifically for charters.
Yeah, so we were obligated to report them separately. So this is the three charters combined.
Oh, combined.
Combined, yeah. So that's Mary Collins, Cherry Valley, and PAX. We disclose our debt service, we disclose our assets. The GAN limit is in here. You'll see that resolution a little bit later. We're not obligated to do an adjustment. Maintenance of efforts is here. If you look on page one seventy-four, you'll see we met our maintenance of effort. Many of the smaller districts did not. The next few pages are all about our indirect calculations. And then we also met the minimum classroom expense calculation, which you will see on page. Well, it's in here somewhere, but we met our, we met our minimum classroom expense. Our minimum is fifty-five, it came in at about fifty-eight percent. So with that. Any questions?
I get one seventy-three.
One seventy-three? That's our maintenance of effort.
Yeah.
Oh, it's on one seventy-one. Fifty-eight point three three. So I will let you know that our next step, now that we've closed, is we're going to immediately start calculating carryover. So we can start posting all those important carryover for our school sites because they need access to their Title I funds or Title II funds or Title III funds. And departments. I know Title II, for example, is already being actively spent and so they're waiting on carryover. The school sites, local grants and donations, things like athletics where they're collecting money. All of that stuff is, we're reshifting our focus into getting all of that carryover posted so that school sites have that access. And then we're also in the process of reconciling the current year budget to the session control that we have our staffing mostly in place. So we're going through that and, and taking a look. And then we're going to be start, starting to look at our LCFF calculations and seeing how this year's budget is going to be impacted based on some of the new information that we have. And I will also tell you, we'll do an in-depth look. We'll look at our utilities, we'll look at our other costs and say, okay, how are we doing when we closed? Do we need to make tweaks in this year's budget based on what we learned from last year? So we'll be looking at that as well, like interest earnings. Questions? I know this is really stimulating stuff.
So when is it, when are the seabeds for this year?
It's the first Tuesday. No, not yet. It's the first Tuesday. It's a great question, though. It's the first Tuesday in October. Every first Tuesday of October is seabed's day. And for those of you who don't know, seabed's day is the day in the year that every district in the state of California takes an enrollment count. So we take an enrollment count and then we report that at the state level. And there's a process. It doesn't actually get certified until usually like February because it goes through this process of, of validating the data, if you will. It also is when we're collecting our free and reduced meal counts. So even though it's as of October second, first Tuesday in October, we don't submit it until November. And we have until October thirty-first to be collecting all those very important earn, the income, alternative income form and free and reduced meal applications. Because it's important to remember, and there's a little bit of confusion this year, that we're under universal meals.
Right.
But our funding, supplemental, Title I, lots of our funding is based on those free and reduced meal applications. So we're really trying to get the message out that in order for us to maximize our funding, we need people to continue to complete those applications so that we can, we can maximize our funding. So even though you can eat for free or you can eat without having, anyone can eat meal, which is great for food service, but it doesn't help our LCFF for our Title I. So it's just important to get that message out.
Thank you, Chris, for making it digestible. I really appreciate it. I had a quick question about the meal. So I saw our report a couple of days ago that the federal government was no longer going to fund free and reduced lunch. So, but California is, and, and so are they covering the full cost of it?
That's a really good question and an important clarification. So last year, we were under, the last two years, we were under summer seamless, which is typically a summer program. But basically where the federal government, federal program, where the federal government was reimbursing us for meals served regardless of free and reduced meal status. The state, and that has ended. And so the state has come in and said, we're going to do universal meals. And they're now going to be reimbursing us. And they're still trying to work out all the details of what that's going to look like for their, their share of the meal. Usually we collect, we usually, to give you an idea, and Fund thirteen is in here, the cafeteria fund. We usually collect about one point two million, one point, between one point two, between nine hundred and one point five, depending on the year. In federal reimbursement, it was over three million this year.
Wow.
For food service. We serve that many meals. And so we're really trying to ramp up our staffing. So now we need to go back and rethink what's the federal versus the state portion. Because the state portion might have only been like a hundred and fifty thousand. So three point two hundred and fifty. Now that's probably going to get flipped a little bit. So we're, we're, we're trying to take a look at what that's going to look like. One other piece I'll add, and it was part of, it was part of the state budget, is transportation. Because we didn't talk about transportation much. But they actually did an augmentation for transportation. And so what, what it's going to look like is that at the end of the year, we're going to report our transportation costs. And then they're, they, the state are going to reimburse us like fifty percent of whatever those costs are or something. So we're taking a look at that as well as we're looking at transportation. So that's another piece of the puzzle that we're still trying to evaluate. What does that impact for us? Because remember, transportation was part of the LCFF, part of our base grants. But it's never gone up by COLA or anything else. So that base was only eighty percent of what we historically got because they reduced it in recession. So now they're looking at, now they're looking at, giving us a better reimbursement for transportation. So anyway.
Chris, I'm confused a little bit of going back to the food service. So the feds aren't paying us for universal. But will they be paying us for those folks who put, fill out the free and reduce? Is that another reason why?
Yes. So we're going back under, from the federal perspective for the cafeteria fund. We are going back into the traditional model of tracking the meals served for free and, for kids who qualify, students who qualify for free and reduced meals. But then there's going to be this universal meals reimbursement from the state for all of the other meals that we've been serving. They've always had a portion of it, but it's a very small portion in the state. So we're still trying to figure out all the nuances of how that reporting is going to happen, and I think so is the state. Part of the challenges are, like, the LCFF templates took a long time to get out so we could actually redo our calculations because there was so much dramatic change in the state budget. The same thing with universal meals. They're still working through the practicality of how do we report and how do they reimburse us for some of this stuff? So we don't know exactly how it's all going to work yet. We just know theoretically how it's supposed to work.
On the same note, how's our paperwork? How is that going? Are we getting people to turn in those forms?
Yes, we're doing it through, what's it called, the new kids enroll? We're doing it through data confirmation, which we started a few years ago. I want to say three years ago, where we, we flipped a switch that said, do the alternative income form. And then also it redirects them to the food service or Titan, the Titan website program to actually fill out a free and reduced meal application. So.
Does that make it a little easier?
It's definitely improved our unduplicated accounts. It's definitely improved it. We're still hovering at around forty-two to forty-three percent, depending on the district. So we're, we're hovering around that. We're not even close to concentration grant levels. But it definitely is helping. And again, we've had staff going to some of the back-to-school nights with tables like at McDowell to kind of help folks fill out those applications because the free and reduced meal applications can be complicated.
I thought the teachers were doing it in class also. Suggest.
And we're, we're, you know, to answer the question, we're actively tracking those numbers. Our goal is a hundred percent data confirmation. We've been working. We've been working with our principal, site principals on, and food service coordinator, and trying to get those numbers as high as we possibly can, because even though we know everyone can eat for free this year, we'd still, it still will impact schools. So, for example, you know, McDowell, McKinley, schools with high supplemental amounts of money, Title I, we want to make sure that we're, we're providing those schools with as much funding as they should, they should be getting.
And our federal programs have dropped, other than COVID, our federal programs have dropped dramatically. We used to get between three hundred and fifty and four hundred thousand in Title I funding for Petaluma Joint Union High School District. And it's around two hundred and ten. So it's literally dropped in the past two years significantly. I'm not exactly sure why, our Title II funding is also down, so Tony and I just worked through the consolidated application of the CARs program, which we'll be bringing back at the next board meeting. And it was kind of shocking how much our title, title funding is dropping. So I don't know if it's because of the free and reduced meals versus alternative income. So the alternative income form, which you can do through data confirmation, that that informs the LCFF calculations for the duplicated. It does not help Title I or food service. So Title I is based on the free and reduced meal application that qualify, that does not include the alternative income form. So it's a, it's a balance of trying to help folks understand that, yes, fill this form out, but if you qualify, we'd really like you to fill this other form out. So that's kind of the balance that we're trying to communicate out. That's all I know at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
It really makes you guys want to come and be a CBO. No, too much math.
Next up, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program plan.
Yeah, you guys get to follow the budget regulations.
All right, hello, everyone, we're here to talk about our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. This is JJ Lynch, our Expanded Learning Coordinator, she'll be joining me tonight. So we'll be talking about continuous funding for before school, after school, and summer intercession.
All right, this is the new funding levels. We wanted to give you kind of an idea of where we were, not even before COVID. I mean, this is twenty twenty-one over here, the ACIS funding is.
The ACIS, oh yes, absolutely. So the ACIS funding is after-school education and safety subsidized funding through the California Department of Education. Those are only for McDowell and McKinley schools. So there's our funding level in twenty twenty-one. We got a little bump for those two school sites in twenty twenty-two. Those programs are currently being run by the Boys and Girls Clubs, they've been with this district for years. Then if you look, we have ELOP, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Not to be confused with the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, which is very different. And thank you Sacramento for not being, I don't, they don't have anyone there that can name it differently. So I just feel like we, I could have probably given them a good name. So there was this funding here. The funding was handed down, a lot like what Chris was saying, with a lot of these funds, especially what I was calling like the S or the COVID suite of funds, ELOG and these S or funds. They were pushed out without a lot of, and it was a pandemic. So there wasn't a lot of time for Sacramento to do, like, how are we going to audit for this? How are we, you know, so it was pushed out, and then they just said local decision. So ELOP is much the same, it was pushed out as a local decision. And then the local people who had to implement it started trying to figure it out. This last summer of twenty-two, twenty-three, the trailer bill came out, and the governors may revise, and we had a nice little jump in funds. And that is that nice yellow ELOP twenty-two, twenty-three. And so what we have here, our nice green bar, is our combination of our ELOP and our ACIS funds. And that green bar is our new reality at Petaluma City Schools. That is our continuous annual. Any questions? That's it. This green bar here, guys, this is our continuous funding amount for now. There's also another trailer bill right now, we're getting trailer bills happening every time. The latest that we're hearing right now is that they want to make this similar to ACIS, a three-year funding cycle, which would be super nice. But as of right now, that is our annual before-school, after-school, summer intercession.
If I, if I may just put some dollars.
So we're going to talk about those to all of them.
So it was about two hundred, what is now about two hundred and ninety thousand for ACIS. And then it's about one point seven million for the ELOP grant or program. So the combined is about one point nine, almost, almost totally two million dollars.
Ongoing funding.
Ongoing funding.
TK six.
And the difference is, ACIS, as JJ indicated, is for just McDowell and McKinley, and that will continue. And then the ELOP layers on top of it.
Yeah, so this is all of our, we're going out a lot of times, because the CDE, and you'll see this from some of the parameters in the other slides. We're going to put this under the umbrella of Expanded Learning. ACIS and ELOP are Expanded Learning for our district. And there are some actual parameters that the CDE, that's their intent, right?
Okay, so parameter, so this is restricted funding, and it is allocated towards our unduplicated students. This is just for TK through sixth, and then the ratios are specific. So TK is one to ten, K through six is one to twenty, and it is inclusive of before, after school, so it's nine hours, including the school day. This also includes a minimum of thirty days for summer and intercession, also at nine hours per day. And we have to conform to those ACIS requirements. And we're using this year as our building, our learning year, it's a non-audit year.
Cool.
Yeah.
This year is our non-audit year, so this is exploratory, which is great, because I'm new. That's truly convenient. Okay, so we're going to start with the, so that, that funding amount, right? It's inclusive, they didn't give us, like, ACIS, normally you'd get a summer ACIS and a core year ACIS. This counts for everything. So we're going to start with after-school, which looks really simple, right? We've got after-school programs happening at all of our sites. Some are ACIS, some are fee-based, they're happening. So we're going to evaluate them, we're going to get MOUs, we're going to get unduplicated kids into all the programs at all the sites, right? It's very simple. We need to be a little bit strategic because of that mandate of the thirty-nine hour days that we have to pay for. That's expensive, like that, so we have to actually do some projecting in ten months, budgeting, and backwards mapping into what we have available now to get these kids into school year, after-school programs, if that makes sense, right? So it's simple and a little strategic. So there's also some considerations, I've already been meeting with site, school site principals, and having some of these conversations. More kids, we need to make space for more kids, so we need to have some discussions around facilities. Not just where we house them, but where it's best for them to learn in after-school. What is a best practice? So it's not just about where housing kids. And staffing, guess what? I don't know if you've been watching the news, but it's really hard to find staff. So these are your conversations that we're having, and these may be some of the challenges that we, that we come against, but we're just going to muscle through it. That's me, okay. So that was after-school, school year. This other pot, the summer and intercession, it's kind of a beast, especially because PCS has not historically had a summer grant like other schools, right? You guys have been funding your own summer school models. This is a really cool opportunity to have an amazing comprehensive summer program and help some families in need that we've already heard from in these intercession days. So this is super cool. Thirty days, they have to be nine hours. We're going to continue working with community partners to provide academic enrichment programs, so the kids will be having fun. We're going to trick them into learning, all right? We're going to continue to utilize our amazing PCS faculty to do what they've always done and provide that targeted academic intervention, right? So there'll be different levels of services and programming happening to these kids, not to them, for them. Okay, transportation will be provided like it always had, we're going to feed them. Oh, this is one cool thing, bridge program. We're going to get the rising seventh graders up into their future junior highs. I think it'll make the summer program cooler. I think they'll want to go more, right? Okay.
And Kim, just to clarify that, the thirty days, you go back, it's minimum thirty days. And so when we start playing around with the calendar and the dates, we're also looking at, you know, when we say summer, typically, just put it in perspective, typically a summer school program is nineteen to twenty days. So now we have a minimum of thirty days, not necessarily all summer. We've heard from some families around the calendar, right? That the one week of spring break, and then the follow, immediately by another week of power shutdown days, saying this is really hard, it's a hard on families. So we're starting thinking about how do we put some intercessions in place? So students, families who are working, family, for working families can bring their children to an intercession. The issue is, if we, if we set them up there, we just do thirty, and we have power shutdown, now all of a sudden, those are not power shutdown days, those are school days. So we have to calendar out, I mean, if we're going to use those days, we probably have to calendar out at least thirty-five. And so we were looking at how do we place them on the calendar strategically, but there's, there are some issues there. So it's a minimum of thirty days in order to, in order to, you know, get this full grant.
And so with the nine hours, are you thinking about like from seven? I mean, how do you calculate the nine hours, are you thinking? Could it be that early, or would it be at eight?
Well, I think the state rationale was for families who have, work, you know, an eight-hour day, right? They want a thirty-minute window to drop their kid off and pick them up. When we're doing, you know, we have to offer the nine hours, and I think it'll depend on where we can get the workers to come and what's best for families. We may try to do intercessions and realize, you know, just by implementation, that our families, actually a majority of our families who are unduplicated work earlier. And we're going to learn that by doing it and realizing that that wasn't their need, and we're going to adjust. This is our year. You know, the state is asking us, and I'm not going to use build the plane while we fly in it, because that's chaotic and scary. We're going to build the house while we live in it. So they, this is a building and learning year, right? This is a building and learning year, and we have to serve kids now. So we have to do both.
Okay, so our next steps is a board approval of our plan. We are, we've already, we already are assessing needs at each of the schools, identifying the unduplicated students in need of after-school. And doing, we did that through data confirmation. We are assessing capacity in order to expand enrollment. We are, we will be working on amending MOUs with existing partners for after-school intercession. And then we'll also begin registering qualifying families who have identified need. We'll also go through a request for proposal process for our summer provider. And so JJ's been doing a lot of thinking, master planning around what that might look like, and is in lots of discussions with our current providers. So we're looking forward to, it's exciting that we're planning for summer in September. It's quite amazing, so any questions?
And just, I wanted to add here too, just, I think one of the things that's exciting for me about this, I mean, clearly it's a huge amount of money, and we're, you know, doing, doing what's best for, for students with money. When you look at school sites, our seven elementary school sites that have, that are going to be, you know, have access to the money, it kind of levels the playing field a little bit. So instead of, you know, I'm going to go to, I'm going to this school, it's my neighborhood school, I'm an unduplicated student or family. And I say, well, I can't even, I can't afford to go to this school, because I can't pay for after-care. I need to now go transfer to another school. It really levels the playing field a little bit to say, oh, actually, no, we're looking at scholarship, we want to make sure that you know, students can go to their neighborhood school or the school, their school of choice, and go to the after-care program and not have to worry about, wow, this, you know, X school is very expensive to go to after-care program. It also kind of, it, it levels it out, but.
So are you looking at before-school? I went to some back-to-school nights where parents have told me that the before-school is a big issue. They've got to be at work at seven. They don't want to just drop their kid off, have them play on the playground till eight o'clock and school starts.
Absolutely, I think we're having those conversations with each site principal, I think the populations of each school site are going to vary. By how before, right? How before is before? And who can we get to stop it?
Okay.
But yes, yes, and.
Okay.
That's what it's for. Yes, yes.
Question?
Yeah, so I need clarification in trying to figure this out in the context of our discussion at our last board meeting, where we approved the ad hoc committee to help us prioritize how we're going to spend not only this fund, but two other major funds coming down the pipeline. And so am I correct that what you're asking for approval right tonight is a process for developing a program to spend this money?
Yeah, the, you know, the difference between the ELO, the ELOP, the ELO dash P, actually is how it's officially known, the Extended Learning Program, and the other two programs, which is the Art Music Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Round and the Extended Learning, is that this one has to have a plan, and we can't spend one dollar of this, really, or, you know, until we actually have a plan in place. It's supposed to be a three-year plan, but I think the idea right now, and I think you heard that from the team here, is that this is our learning year, so we want to do a one-year plan, because we already are living in the house. And we need to get scholarship to these kids, but we can't do that until the board approves this plan. And there's very little discretion in this. So the other two programs, there's a lot of local control where the board can, you know, have a lot of discussion and decide what's the best use for our community, for our schools. This is very targeted, very restricted, very little discretion, other than do we thirty days or thirty-five days? So now are we going to do an hour before and three hours after? I mean, that's like the discretion, there's not a lot of other discretion.
So it's, it's a stop, yeah, I mean, just get it started for this.
Yeah, and, and I checked in with my colleagues at CDE around the one year, and they said that all of this is really a local decision. And the program plan itself is a template with questions from CDE that we answered. And really, the body of this is, the answer to each question was, this year, in year zero, or in twenty-two, twenty-three, we will be evaluating our program partners for this quality standard. We will be evaluating their school site safety plans. We will be evaluating them on their social emotional learning plan, we will be observing their school site, right? So everything in the program plan is really, we're planning to dot, dot, dot in this year, with the intent that in the spring, our stakeholders will gather our stakeholders for that three-year living document, right? This is our learning bill. This is our learning building year. So we need to assess where our partners are at with, you know, we need to set down some foundational expectations for how we want programs to interact with our children in this district. Right? So we need to see how they're interacting with our kids. And that's the expectation is that we explore this and we bring those partner agencies into our school communities as well. So that's what's in the plan is, we're gonna go see what's going on and we're gonna bring the quality out.
Any other questions?
All right. Comments from the public on non-agendized? Okay, um, let's take a break for like five, for two minutes. All right, reconvening. Thank you, everyone. All right, next up, comments from the public on non-agendized items. There's a couple of, um, public comment times I'm going to read. We're gonna open up the chat. Please put your first and last name in the chat. In, while you are, okay, let me, let me go back. Put your first and last name in the chat and the item that you would like to speak about. Um, and while that's happening, I'm going to read our public comment. Under Government Code Section five four nine, five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Do we have anything? And anyone in the public in person have a comment about something not on the agenda? All right. Moving on, adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Hey, um, any questions or comments on anything? Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong. Sorry, y'all. That thing threw me off. Okay.
All in favor?
Report on activities. In correspondence of school board members. So since the last board meeting. Been very busy. Um, site visits to McDowell and McKinley, CSBA webinar on employee housing options for school districts, college essay workshops for AP Lit at CASA, PEF Bash, PCS Special Board Meeting, back to school nights at Sonoma Mountain where I met Julian's parents. McDowell, Petaluma High, Valley Vista, McNear, Petaluma Junior and Grant. And then our student board members took part in various activities, health sciences, childhood cancer relief, environmental advocacy, CASA football games, dances, Petaluma Wildlife Wildlife Museum Open House, uh, Club Rush and Link Crew.
Wow.
Wow.
Impressive.
Everybody. All right.
I just want a little comment, just a very, a quick one about the, um, college essay. That we went to that, uh, you know, it was just, it was a, um, a workshop. So the students brought their essays in and, um, and then there were community members there that read them over, gave them input. Cassandra Basha was the teacher.
Yes.
It was an AP Lit class, um, but it it could have been any class, but it was really fabulous. You know, it was great being back in the classroom and looking at at papers, which is shocking, actually. Every year I can do that. Um, but anyway, I just wanted to shout out that it was really, really a valuable experience for me. I think the the students, um, got a lot out of it. So I just wanted to come in with special.
Yeah, I second that. Um, I think that's amazing opportunity. She provides her students and as a former English teacher, that, that's what I really enjoyed was, cuz I didn't have to grade them. I just gave them feedback. It was great and we have some amazing writers. Amazing writers.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, just really, really quickly on the CSBA webinar on, uh, staff housing. Just wanna put it out there to really to solicit any input that folks have about this opportunity or, uh, if we should pursue anything along these lines. Uh, we all know that cost of living is really prohibitive around here and it causes some folks to, you know, turn away from, uh, a profession in in education. Uh, and some districts are moving towards, uh, assisting with housing. So Jefferson Union, uh, School District down in San Mateo has built and has occupied uh, um, apartments with teachers, SFUSD is is doing the same.
So Sonoma State.
And universities are doing it too. So anyway, uh, at this webinar, uh, really was just a, uh, kind of a revelation that there are a lot of resources out there for districts to look into. And look into the many different options there are for pursuing housing assistance for employees. So, uh, we're in a if that's, if this is something that we think our district needs, that could help us attract, you know, uh, the next generation of teachers, then, you know, we can start looking, we can start thinking about options for that.
Thank you. Right. Comments from the public on consent items. If, we'll open up the chat. If anyone has a comment on anything on the consent agenda, please put your name in the chat and the item that you would like to speak about. All right, we can close the chat. Is there anyone in person that has a comment on anything on the consent agenda? Okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I need to poll something.
Okay, go ahead.
I moved to poll item twelve point one point one. I technically have to abstain. I wasn't here, so I can't approve the minutes.
Twelve point one?
The minutes.
Okay. All right.
I'll second.
Thank you.
How do we vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Now.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Good. Any questions or comments about anything on the consent?
I have one comment. Um, I'm not gonna vote against it, but item twelve point two point five, the agreement between PPD and Petaluma City Schools. A hundred and forty-seven dollars an hour per police officer. That's like really expensive, damn. Yeah, I re- I don't know.
It is.
Okay, I just.
Is it for each one or?
Each officer per hour. No, I did the math. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
So, I mean, I'm not against it for this year necessarily, but I would like to look at other options in future years of like having a safety or having the other community resources instead of more uniformed officers. Yeah.
It's a good idea. Or maybe like reach out to our city manager.
Well, yeah.
And I think, you know, as we got to the end of, the end of last year and we had the the threats.
Right, right, yeah.
We needed to get something in place and PP, they they didn't charge us last year, but said, if you want us to continue to do this, we need to get some sort of agreement together. And so this is, if we, if we need to have officers and we know this, I think, uh, what would we put this for? Um, graduation, graduation events, sporting events where we feel like we need to have officers there.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a better alternative, so I'm not gonna vote against it, but I think it would be good to start thinking more creatively about how we can keep our schools safe.
I like the idea of this.
Okay.
And, um, the, uh, the A through G grant program plan, that includes the alternatives as well as, yes?
I could not hear your, uh, question. Sorry, can you repeat it?
Yeah, my question was, does that the A through G grant program include the alternatives?
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a question as well about the A through G grant. Not be used for like college application workshops?
Uh, yes, it can be used for college application workshops.
And then.
And FAFSA as well?
Okay, there was one section, I think, on the first page the bottom, the last blue section. And it said, students who are on the verge of receiving a D or F on the last progress report before the end of the fall semester will be identified and provided automatic enrollment into an A through G credit recovery class the following semester. Um, so can you talk about that process? Like who is flagging the progress reports? Who's reaching out? Is there a reach out to parents as well that, that there might be a schedule change? If you could talk about that, that'd be great.
Yeah, so one, one component, uh, part of the plan is to root, to build in that, that monitoring system. Um, the guidance alignment process to which we would look at the, that progress report or data that we would want um, in regards to students that are getting Ds or Fs, so that they can be placed in a credit recovery. Um, so part of that process will be developing that system and making sure that that system, um, will address that um, or identify those students. Uh, because we're receiving a learning loss, it's, does, it's specifically it's, it's used to specifically fund, um, credit recovery for that particular case. That's why we wanna still make sure that that language is in there. But as far as the process, um, um, of identifying the students, that will be built with using the other grant money.
Do you have an idea of what it's gonna look like more specifically?
Yeah, so, um, um, the general plan is the guidance alignment piece, which is, uh, the process where like counseling staff, every grading period or every quarter, will look at the the current grades and find out and identify which students are on the verge of getting Ds and Fs. So that the communication then will go out to the families, the students, um, letting them know that they're, um, have the opportunity to enroll in an A through G credit recovery and, uh, and be placed in there for the following semester or summer, depending on where, if it's in the spring. Um, if it's, uh, an option for them to do it, uh, after school or before school, or even on the edgenuity program that we have, uh, we'll give them that option as well, so that we can make sure that we're as flexible as possible for, to provide them that opportunity. The, the key really is in, uh, having counselors sit down and looking at the data periodically, especially during those grading periods and identifying the students who are on the verge, so that we can notify them in case that they, their grades actually reflect that D and F.
So, I mean, they have six weeks left, so then they're automatically enrolled, but they have the option of pulling up their grades and then not being enrolled in the class. Is that right?
Yeah, so if, if the semester grade shows that they got a D or an F, then that's that second semester they would. But we would wanna monitor them and flag them and make sure, and if, you know, ideally let them know ahead of time so that they can try to bring up their grades before having to do a credit recovery, um, if at all possible.
And Apex allows for A through G credit recovery?
I'm sorry?
Apex?
Apex is a platform that we can use for credit recovery, yes.
For A through G?
Apex has an, they have, um, uh, courses that are A through G approved.
Okay, thanks.
But right now, both sites, schools are using edgenuity.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about anything on the consent agenda? All right, or sorry, be amended. You'll have to help me with all this, Caitlin. Okay, all in favor? Okay, um.
I moved to, I moved to approve item twelve point one point one, the minutes from August sixteenth.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any abstain?
I abstain. All right. I won't vote no on them.
All right, um. Any questions about anything so far? All right, comments from the public on action items. We'll reopen the chat for about a minute. If anyone who's still watching in person or online has any comments about any of our action items. All right, we can we can close the chat. Anyone in person have any comments on any of the action items? No? All right. Thank you, um. Caitlin's favorite. Bring sixty-one.
Okay, well, if we're allowed to, I move to stay in hybrid for another month, cuz it's the most accessible for everybody.
Julian, hybrid, hybrid in person, online, right? Those are our three options. This is what we do every time. We talk about a hybrid option, which is what we're doing, fully in person or fully online. Do you have a preference?
Uh, yeah, just like hybrid, cuz it seems to work a lot more for people, cuz there's a lot of things that can go on in someone's life. So it's sometimes predictable things, unpredictable things. So just for the people like me, people in the crowd, or people like you guys, uh, you could have something come up last minute and then you'd have hybrid, so you can still have that alternate, um, sort of way to still have a little part in the meeting, maybe not as like thorough and you know, as it would be in person, but you can still kinda have that part in. So I think hybrid is just overall is a good option for all those people. And of course, just sicknesses, uh, they do happen. So obviously, you don't wanna possibly miss out on a favorite subject or something. So being able to still have a listen and a part in that, I think that's good for everyone.
All right, thank you. All right.
I think Ellen seconded.
Oh, all in favor? All right, thank you, Julian. All right, resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash zero two. Um, honoring the contributions of administrators to quality education and declaring the week of October ninth through fifteenth, the week of the school administrator.
I move to approve resolution two two three dash oh two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Does anyone wanna say anything?
Did you want me to read it?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah.
Whereas leadership matters for California public education system and the more than six million students it serves. Whereas school administrators are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education and whereas the title school administrator is a broad term used to define many education leadership posts in both certificated and classified capacities. And whereas most school administrators begin their careers as teachers, the average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California superintendents have served in education for more than twenty years. Such experience is beneficial in their work to effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement. Such experience is beneficial in their work to effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement. And whereas public schools operate with a lean management systems, across the nation, public schools employ fewer managers and supervisors than most public and private sector industries, including transportation, food service, manufacturing, utilities, construction, publishing, publishing and public administration. And whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents. And whereas the state of California has designated the second full week in the month of October of each year as week of the school administrator in education code 44015 dot point one. And whereas the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts hereby proclaims the week of October 10th through the 16th, 2020, two, as the week of the school administrator, commending all school leaders for the contributions they make to successful student achievement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to edit that?
And yeah, in the minutes, it says that it's the 9th through the 15th and then the resolution. We already passed the resolution.
I know, we already got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Sorry, another resolution adopting the GAN limit. Chris, do you want to speak at all to this?
To keep the excitement going.
Yeah.
Exactly. We are bringing forward our GAN limit for both 2220, 2122 and 2223. There is no increase to our limit necessary. Again, this is a very perfunctory calculation that we are required to do when we close the books and bring it forward with the resolution. The resolution is attached along with the calculations. Even if we had to increase our limit, is nullified by statute so that we basically have to ask for an increase. But in this case, it's not necessary. So we're asking you tonight to approve the resolution and the GAN limit calculations.
I move to approve resolution 2223-03.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right. Approval of the 2122 un-audited actuals.
Since we already had our lovely presentation about the actuals, I will simply move to approve.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright. Comments from the public on discussion information items? There's only one item on here, but we'll still open the chat for like 30 seconds.
Anyone who wants to talk about the Williams settlement?
Oh, and unique policy.
Oh, and unique, oh, unique policy.
Thank you, Ellen.
Yeah, what is it?
They're changing codes. The Bay Area State is like, moving from like the ones that people have. Like the agenda online. Yeah.
So could, could you, just for the, you know, what the unique policies is about?
So we're bringing forth these unique policies. Essentially, I mean, in the description there, they are policies that have a unique code and title, which CSBA does not have a comparable sample. So the CSBA is advising districts to review these policies, determine if we want to keep them. The policies are, are not regularly reviewed or updated by CSBA. So essentially what we're doing is the current policy number, I'll just take an example, is for superintendent of schools, the, the current policy number is 2120. The new policy number is 2001. So we're just aligning with CSBA so that gamut, it's all, it's all correct in there. It's very boring. It's just, it's a change in the actual, the number. And I looked at all of them. I looked at all of them. They're all, they have the exact same title as well. The new title is the same as the old title, it's a different number. That's it.
Wow, thank you.
Alright, any comments for anyone in the audience on the discussion information items? Okay, looks like we have no comments on either. So we can close the chat. Thank you, Matthew. Well, I guess we should start with the first one, the Williams settlement. Sounds exciting.
Hopefully it's not exciting. Hopefully, hopefully it's nice and boring.
Yeah. It's, it's very boring. They said we didn't visit you this quarter. We, you did really good in the quarter, in the third quarter. So congratulations.
But this, I mean, I want to jump in on this one because this, to me, this one is, is very exciting. Because I, as principal at McKinley, had this for all six years I was principal there and every quarter thinking about Williams visits, et cetera, et cetera. And this is the last quarter McKinley is no longer under the Williams settlement. And so this will be the last one that we bring.
That is exciting.
Out of William. Unfortunately for our district, South County Consortium will now start to be visited by the Williams. So we're, we're not out of it as a district, but McKinley's out of it.
Okay.
South County is now.
Good to hear.
Can you remind us what makes?
Sure, yeah. Williams, there's a lawsuit out of Southern California. And there was a whole settlement agreement and they are, they monitor depending on certain factors, they go to, they go to certain schools that meet the requirements for this one. I believe for South County, it's because McKinley had been, been a title, a performance improvement school. And then South County is now in there because of their, I think it's test scores and we know it's their, our moderate to severe students who are in the program. And so they're going to get, they, they've actually already been visited. And they look for three, really three big things. They look for textbooks, sufficiency of textbooks. And not just, you know, we fill out a form and sign and they actually go to the schools and they go classroom to classroom and they visit and they make sure that those textbooks are there. Because part of what happened in before the Williams settlement was they students and families complained, we don't, they didn't, they're, they're saying they have textbooks, they don't have any textbooks. So they actually go in and look at that. They look at your facilities. They like to make sure your water, your drinking fountains are working, your bathrooms, your toilets are flushing, et cetera, et cetera. And the last one, they look at your, your credentials. They look, they make, make sure that the teachers are properly, adequately credentialed. They look at years of service and they want to make sure that your, your, your schools that are most struggling are not, don't have the newest teachers in the district. So it's all, there's, there's a whole system behind it, but that's what the Williams settlement was, is.
Thank you.
Thank you for the history lesson.
Yeah.
Very much.
Actually varies. Alright, and we've already talked about the unique policies. Thank you for explaining that as well. Moving on to future business, does anyone have anything for future business?
If anyone wants to ride in the push truck at the raceway on Saturday, the 24th, we were all invited. The auto, the auto, PHS' auto shop's truck.
At the raceway?
Yeah.
You mean with
Yes, we were all invited. I have grown up queer prom that night, so I don't think I can go. But if any of you want to go, I'll get you connected. Yeah. It's not really business. Get there at like six, stay till like eight.
And you go around and circle.
That's my interpretation. That's my understanding. I could be wrong.
Is this Petaluma High, Caitlin?
Yeah.
Petaluma High Auto Shop.
Yeah.
We'll get, we'll get a little more information, we'll put it into like
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the 24th?
Because monster trucks are next, are this Saturday. So.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for that.
Can you speak into your microphone?
Lots of things going on with Safe Streets Petaluma. There's a, an event October 5th at Grant. And they're trying to encourage, you know, parents and their students to walk or bike to, to school and it's really dangerous.
Yeah.
And so, you know, they're looking at different ways of dealing with it, but they're, they're having a big event, so. That's an announcement more than anything. I think they're also doing something on October 16th, but I'm not, I'll have to get back to you on what.
Like bike rodeo, is that what you're talking about?
It's what?
Oh, is it like a bike rodeo? Is that what you're talking?
Yeah. Well, this one is like a walk and roll to school thing on October 5th. Yeah. The 16th is something along those lines. Do you guys know what that is?
At Grant?
16th is a jogathon. Or 14th.
Oh, no, it's not the 14th. Oh, it's the Yeah. Is that on the 15th?
That is a fabulous thing. That is so great.
Is that October?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then top the ground, look, is that a weekend?
No, October 5th?
October 5th. No, it's a good week. Okay.
It's the kids are coming to school and my anniversary.
Oh.
Okay. Do we have any other future business? Maybe Karen can help us with the dates on the
I'm going to get all these dates.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so I was speaking with Sheldon this past weekend. I would love to see us have like a partnership with Sonoma State and/or San Francisco State. I know Santa Rosa City Schools does it like, I mean, like they're, they're already like in our, like we're in their attendance area, but just put like solidifying something like if our students graduate with this GPA, you know, A through G, then they are guaranteed admission to Sonoma State.
They do that in San Diego.
Yeah, San Francisco Unified does that as a state. Well, my hometown, Kalamazoo, in Kalamazoo Promise. And there was some money attached to it. Sheldon, I talked about this a little bit. I think, yes, I'm totally in support of that and want to, want to do it. We're, I think Sonoma State right now, I'd love to figure out who, now they have a, an interim president.
President?
Well, he's, he's fully hired.
Is he?
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll, we will look into that.
Figure out how to talk. I mean, you know, not right away, but it's something I'd like for us to think about. And then I'd love an advising update. We've talked a lot about A through G and we've been talking for a while about just our different completion rates of A through G. I know we usually have an advising update or accounting update in the spring. So I'd love to see one at some point in the fall, just like, you know, what is their college readiness look like in terms of, you know, starting from nine, ninth through 12th grade? Like advising students about graduation requirements, A through G, college application, FAFSA, all of that. I'd just love to hear more about that. And then also asking PPD to come and give presentations, talk about what they're doing when they're on the campuses for the football games and for our different events. I don't know how long would it take to organize that? Maybe ask Chief Stavano or whoever to come. And yeah, just talk about what their role is when they come off to campus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Any other future business? Julian, do you have anything you'd like to see at some point on the agenda? No? Okay. Okay. And with that, we are adjourned.